I'd like to welcome everybody to the Robert G. McKinnon Council Chambers. Tuesday, July 19th, 2016, 7:00 PM. The agenda is reorganization meeting. First order of business, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republican Party, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, election of officers. First, A, the chairman. What we will do is open up for nominations, and then after call for roll call through the Recording Secretary. Dr. Page?
I'd like to nominate Scott Lazo for Chair.
Second.
His nomination is second. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Amelia Peliquin for Chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If there are no nominations, I would call the nominations are closed, and call for a roll call from the Recording Secretary.
Mr. Bishop?
Mr. Lazo.
Ms. DuVall?
Ms. Peliquin.
Mr. Lazo?
Scott Lazo.
Dr. Page?
Mr. Lazo.
Ms. Peliquin?
Peliquin.
Mr. Wang?
Mrs. Peliquin.
Three for Mr. Lazo, three for Ms. Peliquin.
We have a tie for the chairmanship, so there is not a chairmanship. What we will do is wait till reorganization happens, when the seventh member comes on to the Board, and then at that time they would decide the chairmanship. Moving on to the vice chairmanship. Do I have any nominations?
I'd nominate Dr. Page.
Second is nomination.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Is there no further nominations? Nominations are closed. Roll call.
Ms. DuVall?
Me? I agree.
Mr. Lazo?
Excuse me, you have to state the name of the person that you're voting for.
Okay.
Dr. Page.
Okay, doctors.
Page.
Mr. Lazo?
Dr. Page.
Dr. Page?
Dr. Page.
Ms. Peliquin?
Dr. Page.
Mr. Wang?
Dr. Page.
Mr. Bishop?
Dr. Page.
Six for Dr. Page.
Moving on for Secretary. Do I have any nominations for Secretary? It's customary that the superintendent is the secretary of the school committee. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate the, uh, Dr. Heiziger as the Secretary.
Second.
His motion is second. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? If no further nominations, Max?
Mr. Lazo?
Heiziger.
Dr. Page?
Heiziger.
Ms. Peliquin?
Heiziger.
Mr. Wang?
Heiziger.
Mr. Bishop?
Dr. Heiziger.
Ms. DuVall?
Dr. Heiziger.
Six for Dr. Heiziger.
Moving on to Recording Secretary. Do I have any nominations for?
I'd like to nominate Max Gulickson, please.
This is nomination for Max Gulickson.
Second.
Second by Amelia Peliquin. Are there any nominations? No nominations?
Dr. Page?
Uh, yes, Max Gulickson.
Ms. Peliquin?
Max Gulickson.
Mr. Wang?
Gulickson.
Mr. Bishop?
Mr. Gulickson.
Ms. DuVall?
My, uh, Mr. Gulickson.
Mr. Lazo?
Mr. Gulickson.
Six for Mr. Gulickson. Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three. Date and time of the regular meeting. A, day of the regular meeting. Do I have any?
I'd like to make a motion that we remain on Tuesday evenings at 7:00 PM.
Second.
That will be once a month under the, uh...
Yep.
Would we be able to, if that goes through, would we be able to get a year in advance? You know, would we be able to put those off the entire year? So we'd know, we've had some challenges getting the dates for everybody to know. Thank you.
So it's Tuesday at 7:00. His motion is second. Let's roll call. Roll call.
Ms. Peliquin?
Yes.
Mr. Wang?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Six, yes.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Acceptance of Rules of Order. A, Robert's Rules of Order, fully revised. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
His motion is second. Any discussion? If no discussion, roll call.
Mr. Wang?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Ms., yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Peliquin?
Yes.
Six, yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor? Opposed? We adjourn.
Welcome to the McKinnon Council Chambers, Tuesday, July 19th, 2016. I would like to call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Could I have a roll call? A call to order.
Mr. Bishop?
Present.
Ms. DuVall?
Present.
Mr. Lazo?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Ms. Peliquin?
Present.
Mr. Wang?
Present.
Six present.
Could we have pledge allegiance? Please join the committee.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republican Party, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Three, Public Input. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the school committee at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Discussion of the Minutes from the June 22nd, 2016, regular meeting. Is there anybody that would like to comment on the minutes? Seeing none, move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairperson's Announcements. There are no chairpersons announcements tonight, other than the fact that I guess I will default to the chairperson since we don't have a chairperson. But we do have a vice chair for, until the Board can, in joint session with the Town Council, will appoint a seventh member of the school committee as soon as possible, hopefully. Okay. Agenda Item Number Six, New Business. Six A, Upcoming Planning and Professional Development. Dr. Heiziger.
Thank you, Dr. Page. Before I begin, good evening, everyone, members of the committee. I just want to welcome our new members. Tanya DuVall, congratulations on your election to the school committee. Ko Wang, welcome, congratulations. And the newly re-elected Amelia Peliquin. So congratulations to all of you. We look forward to working with you in the next year. I also want to just take a moment to thank Mr. Jovan and Ms. Congdon for their years of service. They will be missed on the committee. And I look forward to working with this group over the next year. I also want to acknowledge, just take a moment to acknowledge, the resignation of Mr. Olivo. According to the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, vacancies in the elected town boards established under the charter shall be filled by the Town Council in a joint convention with the remaining members of the respective board within 60 days. So we'll look forward to filling that vacant seat. Some upcoming professional development. In June, we had some really wonderful math professional development with a national expert who worked with the middle and high school math teachers. New teacher induction is coming up in August, the week of August 15th, and new teachers are going to cover a array of topics. They're going to be working with the town side around benefits. They're going to have a session with the union. They'll be having sheltered English immersion professional development, special education, and technology professional development, as well as PD on instruction. We really want all of the new staff coming in to really be able to start strong and feel like they've got a strong footing when they start at the beginning of the year. The teachers' first week, we will be inviting all the members of the school committee to our opening. We will have a wonderful keynote whom all of you know, and it's going to be really exciting. I'm going to leave the suspense for the next month, but we're going to look forward to inviting you and the Town Council to join us for a wonderful welcome and celebration to open the new year with all of our staff. And we're really excited about what's coming. That entire week, we are going to have a conference-like professional development week for the entire staff. There will be breakout sessions with certain mandatory trainings. Because we're migrating from office to Google, all staff will be taking a Google boot camp. We are going to have professional development on differentiated instruction, the development of learning targets, and the use of formative assessment in classrooms. Special educators will have special PD around developing standards-based IEPs and specially-designed instruction. We're going to have PD workshops on servicing ELL students in sheltered English immersion. So teachers will be going through different sessions and workshops throughout the week, and then on the final day, they will be having time to set up their classrooms, as well as having department time and grade level meeting time. So that is being set up, and we're really excited about that for them. I think it's going to really lead to a strong start. And this year, we have been immersed in hiring. We've hired 26 new staff, general education teachers. We've hired six clinical social worker and adjustment counselors, school psychologists, behavioral specialists, and special education teachers. The hiring process is going well, considering the number of hires that we've needed to make. And also, we did some reallocation of educational assistance, and out of courtesy, all educational assistants tomorrow will be getting letters inviting them to reapply for any educational assistant postings for which they are qualified for. So we just want to make sure that, you know, as staff is moved around, we're definitely giving the opportunity for those staff who are qualified to reapply for positions that reopen to come back and work with the Southbridge Public Schools. That's very important to us. And next is the budget update.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions regarding that or comments from any members? Okay, seeing none, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, B, Budget Update. Dr. Heiziger.
I'm going to defer to Dan Deedy, our new Director of Finance, Operations, and Human Resources. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'd like to focus my discussion tonight on three matters. Number one, just want to give a quick update on the close of the FY16 fiscal year. Then, secondly, talk about the FY17 budget. And then last, just conclude with a quick update on some of the audits that the district has engaged over the past several months. So just very quickly, we worked with the town accountant, and we have pretty much closed the year for FY16. I use the term pretty much because there are some general entries that still need to be processed and make some final adjustments. She is away on vacation this week, and I'll work with her next week to make those adjustments. And she's aware of that. We have loaded the FY17 budget into KVS, our accounting software. And again, until we wrap up the business here in '16, she hasn't opened up the '17 module yet. That'll happen probably on Monday and Tuesday, and then we'll begin the process of encumbering purchase audits for FY17, and also doing the initial purchasing for FY17 as well. One quick update on circuit breaker for FY16. As you may know, typically, the DESI in the final fourth quarter payment will make an adjustment up when monies are available. So in our final fourth quarter payment that we received prior to the end of June, we received an additional $15,409 for the fourth quarter. So that fourth quarter payment was approximately $156,032. So our FY16 circuit breaker reimbursement, of which we have carried forward 100% into fiscal year '17, is just under $578,000 at $577,901, 577-901. So we've rolled that into the FY17 budget. And just as a aside also, I've been working with Chupu Services Director and our SPED Director, and I'll follow this to you in our next meeting, so you'll see this working document that I've created. In essence, it's an Excel spreadsheet that shows revenues, estimated revenues, as well as estimated expenditures relative to tuitions in the SPED budget. And that'll be an ongoing document during the year as we make adjustments, given placements and revenues. So I'll be happy to share that with you at our next meeting. FY17. Just very quickly, a couple of comments on the state budget. For the past two years, it's been a challenge for all districts across the Commonwealth in terms of the kindergarten grants. In terms of the budget process for FY16, the debate was, is the 18.1 million going to be funded for FY16? And through the various machinations of the budget, the House One budget, then the House budget, and then the Senate, then the Compromise Committee, at the end of the day, in FY16, the kindergarten grant was funded in its entirety at approximately $18.6 million. That same challenge argument occurred again for FY17. And one of the many challenges that all districts, including Southbridge, was about is where do we stand for the kindergarten grant for FY17? The value of that grant for the district in FY16, the initial appropriation was approximately $76,000 and change. There was an adjustment during the year, so the amended budget for the FY16 kindergarten grant was approximately $112,000 and change. Of that $112,000 and change, $102,000 was dedicated to salary and benefits, and then the balance of the $10,000 was dedicated to professional development. To make a long story short, to make several budget months short, at the end of the day, the final FY17 state budget cut the kindergarten grant across the Board. That was an $18.6 million cut across the Board that impacted this district, and also many districts across the Commonwealth. And the argument was that the purpose of those funds initially was to assist and support districts to at least jumpstart a kindergarten program. It was never intended to sustain a kindergarten program. That was the argument. So at the end of the day, we sustained a cut based upon the FY16 number of approximately $112,000, and I'll get to that in a second. In terms of Chapter 70, the good news is that, again, through the budgeting process, the governance budget had an additional $20 per student. The House and the Senate were both on board with an additional $55 per student for Chapter 70. When the dust settled, if you will, relative to the FY17 state budget, the additional $55 per student was allocated to each district across the Board. So that was good news. Unfortunately, in terms of the state budget, and I know that you've heard about the Foundation Budget Review Commission, none of the recommendations, none of the recommendations that the commission had brought forward. And if you don't have a copy of the report, I'm happy to send you a copy of that report and review that, but none of those very extensive, comprehensive, invaluable recommendations. In particular, the cost for health insurance and the cost of special occasions, two of the big, large-ticket areas that were part of that evaluation process, they weren't incorporated into the '17 budget. So we waited another year. There are many professional groups, MasBowl being one, which continues to advocate for those dollars to be incorporated in some capacity in the FY18 budget. And I should say, Mr. Chair, if I'm going too fast, if you have any questions. Okay, we're good. All right. So our Chapter 70 for FY17, we saw a bump of approximately $745,000 and change, 745, 020. So that's a good number for FY17. That's a solid number. FY17, in terms of the district budget, I left with you tonight at your seats a copy of the budget as it currently exists. And again, I apologize, you just saw this evening. I'd be very happy to take any phone calls or any questions, just...
Mr. Chairman, just a quick, a short one, copy for Tanya.
Okay, I'll make sure I get you a copy. I apologize for that.
Mr. Bishop?
First of all, for anybody who's not aware, I did notice that this is on our website. The line item budget is on the website now.
It is. I'm not sure if that's the current one. I made some changes yesterday, some very, very minor changes. One thing I do, as you will see as we go forward, is I tend to date stamp any and all documents that I do. So I'll ensure that that document, which I date stamped yesterday, is up there for you to review.
I have a question regarding the budget. I don't know if this is appropriate at this time to ask you a question regarding the budget.
You may.
Thank you. I noticed in looking over quickly, when I ran for school committee, two issues that were really crippling the district from my eyes were the amount of money we were spending on unemployment, and the amount of money we were spending on legal fees. I look at next year's budget, and we're budgeting $250,000 for legal fees. Would it not be cheaper to bring an in-house lawyer on board for that kind of money? I'm not happy with the legal services we have. I don't like the law firm we use. I'll be, I'm candidly saying it on TV, I think we could do a whole lot better for $250,000. Are we going, is there some lawsuits or something coming down that we don't know about?
Through the Chair, if I may, address that first.
Please.
The genesis to that number is based upon a historical number that the DESI has from the other two districts that are currently in receivership. And so, given that activity, not having a true sense, but just only that history, that was the figure that they plugged in when they assumed oversight of the development of the FY17 budget.
All right, but back to my original question, couldn't we hire a lawyer cheaper?
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
To Mr. Deedy's point, we have a legal firm that is working with us in regards to receivership issues, and that was the majority of that increase and that bump. We will be reviewing legal services over the next year, but the legal services that we have employed for the receivership, there are specialties in receivership legal issues. And so, that's why we've gone with that particular firm.
And this is the firm we've been using right along?
No, that we have, we're working with two different firms.
Two different firms.
Yes, the firm that we're working with in terms of receivership is out of Boston, and we still utilize the firm that we have been using for local issues.
All right. My second question regarding the budget is, again, the unemployment issue, there's $200,000 budgeted. I notice that we've terminated about 27 professional staff, as well as 13 EAs, educational assistants. Will the $200,000 be adequate for that? Do we see that that's going to be adequate to meet the needs of the unemployment that we're going to be forced to pay?
Through the Chair, again, that number is a historical number. That is based upon the FY16 number that was in the budget. I can tell you that based upon FY16 expenditures a day, we were well under that number. Again, looking at the receivership, looking at the challenges that are before us, looking at the activity that occurred last spring, it's our best estimate. What I would suggest, as I have suggested to the receiver, is that I will be doing monthly projections based upon the activity of the unemployment claims. To get a really good sense, I would suggest that we look at the activity in the early fall to reflect July through, say, September, and based upon that, then make some projections. In the event that my projections state that our estimated expenditures may be greater than our revenue, then I would bring forward to the receiver a request to transfer funds, most likely from within the expense budget, to that line, to sustain those expenditures or balance of the fiscal year.
So we would not be going back to the town, looking for additional unemployment funds?
At this point in time, that would not be my game plan. My game plan, if you will, would be to bring forward to the receiver a request that would ultimately be approved by the town accountant. And again, I would look to make that adjustment initially from the expense budget. A good barometer of that would be probably mid to late winter in terms of that activity. I should also point out, too, that the district does have the option, when claims are filed, to challenge those. And I do have a hearing scheduled for August 1st relative to a particular claim.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'm to understand that the unemployment bills are billed to the school budget? They are no longer taken care of on town side budget?
Yes, through the Chair, that's correct. And you have the history, I don't, but I want to say that it's probably the past two, maybe three years at the most, that those expenditures have been part of the school department's operating budget.
Okay. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you. Go ahead. Could I, what was the unemployment figure for the FY16? Where do we end up?
The appropriation was $200,000.
And where do we end up roughly expending?
I'd be happy to provide that. There was an invoice that came in last week. I do know that there was an encumbrance in there of approximately $20,000, and I believe the expenditure was $12,000. So a little bit under $200,000 was the expenditure. We came within budget.
Thank you.
Ms. Peliquin?
I have a question regarding the Foundation Budget Review Commission. I don't know, I have read the report. I don't know if those of you here with me tonight have read it as well, but it's very extensive. It has a lot of, I will admit, they are expensive recommendations, but I think they're recommendations that really needed to be made because they did not look at how to fund public education in Massachusetts since 1993, and a lot has changed since then. So I would ask that those of us that haven't checked it out yet to read through it, and I would like to discuss whether we could individually write our legislators, asking if they would support legislation to implement the findings of the Foundation Budget Review Commission, particularly in the areas of employee healthcare and special education. But I know we're at Level 5, so I don't know how much we can do to advocate.
If, through the Chair? Yeah. If I may. As you know, I serve as a Board Member of MasBowl, and my Executive Director, Dave Vertolino, was one of the members that was on the Foundation Budget Review Commission. And we talk about this quite often. And he, along with representatives from MAS, MAS Association School Superintendents, MAS, MAS Association School Committees, they continue to advocate for this. If you'd like someday at a future meeting, I'd be more than happy to have Mr. Vertolino, as an active member of the commission, come before you and speak about the commission's work, if you'd like that, some meeting down the road.
I would be interested.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So very quickly, Mr. Chair, and I'm probably running over my time here, and I apologize. Our budget reflected a $459,395 increase over the FY16 budget, which is approximately 1.79%. And again, as you know, and so the number, I apologize, $26,133,400. There is tremendous activity with the budgeting processes, you know, to make a determination as to what the Chapter 70 numbers are and aren't, and so that's slightly less than what's allocated to the district, and we'll be working with the town to address that challenge there. Should also point out, as you probably know, too, that in addition to the operating budget, there's a separate allocation, approximately $300,000, which is dedicated primarily to technology, instructional technology, hardware, software. About $114,000 of that is also dedicated to textbooks, and the balance is for some industrial equipment, heavy-duty sanders and waxers that we'll be using in the buildings, approximately $20,000. So that's in addition to the $26.1 million. And I should also point out, too, that, and again, when you look at the budget, you're not also looking at the operating funds, but you're also looking at grants and revolvings, and we're looking also next year to tap into... and we're looking also next year to tap into our revolving funds. Something that I noticed in the 12 days, I think, that I've been here, is that I've brought with me, which I have shared with the receiver, a methodology which calculates the indirect cost to tap into, for example, the school lunch account. And so, we're using that to further refine some of the figures that we can use associated with school lunch, as an example, to offset the cost for utilities and custodial costs. And again, at a future meeting, I'd be happy to share that with you and show you what I'm talking about. Last, but certainly not least, I want to bring to your attention, in the budget packet at the very end, is a three-page financial calendar. And I just want to state that this financial calendar, at the very end, is not to be confused with the FY '18 budget calendar. But I believe that this calendar delineates, in no uncertain terms, expectations throughout the year, deadlines that all administrators and building staff are about. And again, I know that you just received that this evening. Takes some time, over the next couple of days, to review that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. This information has already been shared with the leadership team and with building staff, and this information is also on our website as well, so that the expectations are crystal clear, if you will, from the get-go, as to what our deadlines are. Key point, for example, in there is that I'm looking to have all FY '17 encumbrances made in whole by early December, so that that gives the district the opportunity to make adjustments where appropriate in the budget. Secondly, I'm looking to begin the closure process for FY '17 in early May of FY '17. So, that way, we can plug the gaps and also address the work of the receiver, if there are any last-minute needs in fiscal year '17. Again, that's in there. There are also some very definitive deadlines, timelines, relative to grants. One of the challenges that we're still working with is that there's still some grant money that we need to reverse or journal out or sadly perhaps give back. And we're working on it. But those expectations for '17 are delineated in there in no uncertain terms. And typically, what I like to do is leave a window of about two months to close out revolving funds, and June 30, grants that end in June 30, so that we can then make any final adjustments if necessary. So, that calendar is in your packet, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. There's also, in that calendar, a tentative kickoff date for the FY '18 budget process. And again, that's not the budget calendar, but that is in early November of this coming November. And then last, but not least, as you may know, the district has engaged both the DESI and MasBowl to do several financial reviews. The DESI came in in late May and looked at a number of grants. It wasn't an audit, but a review. And these were some federal grants, the 140. They didn't look at the title one or the 240, because those are separate. But, so they looked at these various grants, the 140, the 180, the 274, the 298, et cetera, the 701, which is kindergarten grant. And they made some recommendations. But in their recommendations, they had asked that they hold off doing any work until the district received the MasBowl report regarding the financial review that was conducted back in May and June. The district received a draft copy of that report last Thursday or Friday, and it's an extensive document that I've only begun to look at. What I'd like to do is go through the document and also have a discussion with the DESI as well relative to their grant review. And once we make any adjustments, if necessary, we'll get the final documents up online so that the public can review those audits. But more importantly is that particularly the MasBowl review, which was incredibly comprehensive, is that I believe that that document will serve as a guide for the district as we look to right the ship, so to speak, and put some hard and fast internal controls and processes and practices in place. So, I'll be looking at those in the next week or two, and hope to have a final product by mid-August at the latest that I can share with the committee, and then have those up online.
Pretty good 12 days.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments for the business manager?
I'd just like, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'd just like to comment, I'm very impressed with what you've accomplished in 12 days. Looking forward to the next 12.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Deedy. Moving on to Agenda Item 6C, determine next regular school committee meeting date. I looked at the calendar really quickly, and four weeks from today, looks like August 16, 2016, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Does that work for everyone? Okay. Do we need a vote on that? I don't think so.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Will there be a reorganization meeting? I know I did not get a phone call from the council.
Yeah, we'll have to see if there's a reorg, if we get the process...
Having a meeting, we'll have that done.
Right, we should probably, yeah, let's defer the next meeting date till we get the reorganization done. So, there will be no scheduling at this time. We'll need to get with the council, get a seventh member appointed, and then we can have a meeting, okay? Okay, moving on to member forum. Any member of the school committee have something they would like to mention? Ms. Pellican?
I have two things. The first is, last week, I went to a great conference about municipal policy in Pittsburgh last week. It was called Local Progress. And I do have a flash drive from that conference with materials from presentations that I'd like to share with the board, if possible. I don't know if that's something that Mr. Parent could help me out with or something, because I did get a lot of great information at the conference, and I do want to be able to share it with the board members, if possible. And the other thing I wanted to mention, I wanted to thank everybody here who was at the last meeting for signing the charter school letter that I drafted. Although I would like to say, since we have two new members and we will be soon adding a third new member, I would like to bring it back to the board to get the new people onboard, to be able to sign it. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Lozo?
I would just like a moment to welcome Dan. I'm looking forward to working with you. It seems like what we're hearing is, when there's a question asked, you're very quick with an answer, and you have a tremendous amount of knowledge, and your processes prove that. You're going to be very, very good at what you do. And welcome to Southbridge.
Thank you.
Secondly, I'd just like to thank Co. and welcome as a new school committee member. You know, it's a little different right now compared to the original, but looking forward to working with you. And Tanya, also, welcome to the Southbridge School Committee. It's very rewarding. You meet a lot of nice people, but there's a lot of work ahead, but not so much for us now, but in the future, and I'm looking forward to working with both of you. Thank you.
Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Dr. Page. As I mentioned earlier, I would like to, maybe you could send along whoever's responsible for the updated website. It's greatly improved, very nice job. And it's great having the, and for the taxpayers, the people putting this $27, $28 million out there for the benefit of our students and our community. There is a complete line item budget, so you can actually go online. This is a first. I stood at the podium last year trying to get a copy of the line item budget, and it was like, I was asking for, I don't know what I was asking for, but I didn't get it. So, I compliment whoever's responsible for getting that up and running, and I encourage all citizens to go on their website, see what's going on in our schools, see where your money's being spent, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, just real quick, I would like to, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, is to publicly thank Jill Congdon, Chris Alivo, and Jack Jovan for their service on the school committee. I really enjoyed working with them last year, and wish them all of the best for success in the future. And at the same time, I would like to welcome the newly-elected members, Amelia, welcome back, Tanya, and Co. And we're looking forward to a very productive receivership. So, thank you. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.